Well, hello and welcome, everybody. We are going to be getting this candidate forum going here promptly at 7:00. We're going to shoot to get you out of here as close to 8:00 on the button as we can. Welcome to one and all of you. I'm so happy to see you here and just so glad that you've taken time out from your busy days and busy weeks to hear from our candidates here for the Ward Seven Candidate Forum. Item number two on my list is Introduce Self. The last time we did one of these events, I apparently did a great job of introducing everybody on the stage, and I forgot to introduce me, which caused some confusion. I'm Marty Carlson. I'm the longtime president of the Church Council here at Lake of the Isles, although I'm currently spending a term-limited year in the wilderness. And I'm also the vice chair of the Kenwood Neighborhood Organization, which is one of the outfits sponsoring tonight's event. I want to extend a special thank you to our sponsors. That would be the East Isles Neighborhood Organization Association, the Lowry Hill Neighborhood Association, Sydney, and Kenwood. Without all of their participation, this would not have been possible, and we really appreciate the support from all of these different groups, and we hope that you find it a valuable and informative event. I do want to extend a special welcome as well to folks who might be joining us online. This event is being livestreamed and recorded. If you or anybody you know wants to review it after the fact, it will be hosted on the Kenwood Neighborhood Organization YouTube channel. So just go onto Google, type in "Kenwood Neighborhood Organization YouTube." It'll be the first hit that you get, and we're going to post the whole thing unedited. I want to, speaking of technology, extend a special thank you to the one person you can't see here, who is our church audiovisual guru, Joseph Lemire. He is right through that door there. He's the man behind the curtain. But again, none of this would have been possible without his willingness to help and participate. I do want to make clear as well that none of the sponsoring organizations or the church endorse any candidates whatsoever. We're not in the business of making endorsements. What we are in the business of is making sure that we have an informed and engaged neighborhood and electorate. We do endorse voting, but as to who you vote for, that's entirely up to you. Without further ado, I'm going to introduce our moderator for this evening, Andrea Sax. Andrea is a longtime friend and St. Paul resident. We wanted to find a moderator who does not live in Ward Seven, who doesn't have a dog in the fight. We've been friends ever since my son Isaac bit her son Nathan back in first grade, and I had to call and say, "I'm sorry, my son bit your son." We've been friends ever since. But when we're not parenting, she's been on the history faculty at St. Paul Academy since 2000. She has a bachelor's in history and literature from Harvard, and she got her PhD in American Studies here at the University of Minnesota, and generally is a longtime proponent of civic involvement and good government. So thank you, Andrea, for your willingness to do this. Last but not least, I want to extend a very special thank you to our candidates, council member Katie Cashman and park commissioner Elizabeth Schaefer, for agreeing to be here tonight. I have said it many times, I will say it again, running for political office, particularly in this era, is really, I think, an act of courage, and the people who are willing to step up and put their hat in the ring really do deserve our thanks and our respect, and they absolutely have it from me. And we're fortunate because these candidates really do differ on substantive issues. You'll hear more about that tonight. They're presenting us on November 4th and early election right now with real substantive choices, and that's what democracy is about. So thank you to both of you for being here. I'm going to ask for one round of applause for the candidates. And then, please hold your applause until the event's concluded. We really want people to hear from the candidates, not from the audience. If anybody needs to use the restroom, it is just through the door there, down the stairs and to your left, or you can take the elevator. And if you have any other logistical questions, I'll just be back at the end of the sanctuary there, and just feel free to flag me down. So thanks again to you all, and Andrea, take it from here.
Welcome, everybody, and happy NEA to those who observe it. Briefly explain the order of the evening. We will hear a three-minute opening statement from each of the candidates, and I will ask some prepared questions that I've been given in advance, and each of the candidates will have two minutes to answer the questions. This is a forum, not a debate, so there won't be kind of back and forth. We'll just hear a response from each candidate and mix up the order in which they answer questions. Towards the end of the forum, we will transition over to questions that are being sorted through right now that were from you all, so we'll finish with those, and then wrap it up with a one-minute closing statement from each candidate. I think that's it. So I think we'll go ahead with three-minute opening statement. Councilmember Cashman, do you want to begin?
Okay. Thank you so much, Andrea, for moderating this, and thank you to all the neighborhood organizations who organize. Thank you, neighbors, for coming out tonight to hear directly from your candidates for city council. My name is Katie Cashman. Are you sure pronouns? I'm so proud to serve you as the Ward Seven City Council member. It's been about two years that I've been on the council, and I'm now running for reelection to a four-year term, so I hope to earn your vote tonight. I'm committed to building a safe and vibrant community in Minneapolis that works for all people in our ward, not just the privileged, wealthy few, but no matter your income status, your housing status, your gender and sexuality, your disability, you are welcome in this city, and you are able to thrive. I am able to chair the city's Climate and Infrastructure Committee, which is a committee that I really created upon joining the council, to bring our Public Works and Health Departments together to forage a path forward for sustainability in Minneapolis. And we are a leader in this area. We've been able to help thousands of residents to weatherize and retrofit their homes. I also serve on the Business Housing and Zoning Committee, and I'm very proud that the housing work, the development support that I've been able to offer, has built thousands of units of new housing in Minneapolis, and we actually welcomed 2,000 more residents into the downtown core. Those are people who are shopping, going to our schools, going to work every day, making our streets lively and vibrant, and we want to create a walkable neighborhood in every neighborhood of the city where people can truly move around and have a 15-minute city to be able to walk to your doctor, to your school, to your job, to all the services you need, and that's the beautiful thing about living in the city. I've also been very proud to advance public safety in this city. We are not all the way there. In fact, you know, sometimes it feels like we're taking multiple steps backward every time we take a step forward, but we have been able to recruit hundreds of new officers into our MPD Department of Public Safety through raising wages about 22% over the next three years. And in addition to hiring new officers, many of whom are CSOs and cadets right now, we've also been able to civilianize a lot of the functions of our public safety department. And that means that when you call 911, you might not get just a police officer. You might get homeless responders. You might get mental health responders, traffic control, et cetera. So my priorities for reelection include sustainability, housing development, and public safety for all in Minneapolis. You can count on me as a woman of action to show up with integrity every single day, to work with all of my council members and the mayor and our state legislature to get the job done and ultimately improve the lives of Ward Seven residents. Thank you so much.
Next, we'll hear from Commissioner Schaefer.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for sharing your time with me this evening and for Lake of the Isles Lutheran Church and all the people that have helped organize this event. Many of you here in this room have heard my stump speech, so I'm going to give you the 50,000-feet version and end with a story. My name is Elizabeth Schaefer. My husband and I have four adult children. We've been in Lowry Hill, a resident of Lowry Hill, for the last 13 years. Our oldest child just bought their condo downtown. Our youngest son is a Minneapolis firefighter. I have been a former teacher, and I am currently your Minneapolis Park Commissioner for District Four, which represents 13 neighborhoods. It has been a joy for me to participate in this public service, in representing the variety of neighborhoods and people that are in this district. Some of my accomplishments I'm excited about are expanding free programming for youth citywide, developing the first endowment in partnership with the Minneapolis Parks Foundation that the park board has ever had, working and expanding our natural resources, both clean water management with the watershed, the city, and the park board, as well as expanding natural resources staff, are some of the things that I've been excited about participating in, as well as expanding stormwater funding and parkway funding, maintenance for parkways. Now I'm headed to putting my name forward for city council, hoping to bring the same common sense, pragmatic, get-things-done attitude of leadership that I've had collaborating with whomever the staff is, whomever my colleagues are, to try to move the ball forward for the residents of Minneapolis. So I am looking forward to a high level of focusing on public safety and livability and really driving economic thriving for our uptown and downtown areas. Last Saturday, I was out door knocking, and who should open the door but Patricia? I met Patricia about seven years ago in Thomas Lowry Park. In a strange turn of conversation, we found out that her husband helped my father get his first small business loan in central Minnesota in the 1970s. And I looked at her, and I said, "Patricia, I haven't seen you for a few years." And she said, "Can you believe it? I'm 102 now." My oldest, you know, confirmed supporter, I think. But the reason I share this is, number one, twofold. One is, it was a great encouragement to me that I am doing what I'm supposed to be doing at this stage. And number two, it was an encouragement and reminder to me that all of our lives are interconnected, that we all sit as neighbors in Ward Seven at this moment in time, and it's not just about an election. It's about using our realm of influence to better our city. Thank you.
All right. We will move on to the prepared questions now, and I think for this first one, we'll flip the order, so Commissioner Schaefer will begin. And this first question is about public safety. How do you envision the Minneapolis Police Department changing over the next four years? And specifically, do you support renewing the contract of Chief O'Hara?
Yes. Public safety is a thing we hear about again and again on the doors as we're knocking doors. It's still the number-one priority that I hear from residents. I think there are several things that we will anticipate need to improve in the next four years. Number one, we need to continue our reform efforts. We need to keep moving the ball forward on reforming MPD. Number two, I've heard the chief say that in about two more years, we're going to need to have additional funding for hiring more officers. The overtime differential will get these other folks in the queue, and we'll need to think about expanding funding for the police in about two to three more years. I also think in the next four years, we're going to need to reevaluate and support those alternative policing strategies that we have tried. We're going to now have a longer period of time to assess them. So we've expanded that funding from $3 million to $23 million in the last four years, five years, and so I think we'll have an opportunity in the next four years to really have a data-driven look about what's really working and what's not working. Some things are really working, like the Behavioral Crisis Response Units, and others, we've had issues with some of the Violence Interrupter contracts. So I look forward to streamlining those and really making sure that we're fiscally responsible with all money that we're putting forward for public safety. We need to continue to push for more investigators. We need to continue to hold the ability to enforce and prosecute and figure out what's going on in our neighborhoods around property crime to a greater degree. So those would be some of the things I'd look forward to. I support renewing the chief's contract. He's got a tough job, but he's nationally recognized and respected, both here and nationally, and so I would look forward to working with him in the years ahead. And of course, if we had differences of opinion, I would work behind the scenes in working that out with him and not publicly.
Well, I'll tell a couple of stories here because I did do a few ride-alongs last week, both with our Fifth Precinct officers and with our BCR, Behavioral Crisis Responders. And what I really saw in the Fifth Precinct right now is that there are a lot of people dealing with crimes of poverty. There are a lot of people on our streets dealing with homelessness. There are a lot of people dealing with their addictions in public. There are a lot of tools that our police officers don't currently have to deal with these crises. And so we came upon call after call of people drinking, you know, open bottle, maybe the officer's going to deliver a citation, but maybe that person's just going to rip it up and say, "I'm not paying this." And I think what we're realizing more and more as a city is that there are complimentary services that we can be providing that better help these individuals get into a path of recovery. I do want to talk about Behavioral Crisis Response because the next day, I went on a ride-along. We picked up a woman who was acting very disorderly, very disorderly, in a treatment facility, and through a trusted relationship between David, who's driving the van, and this woman, she agreed to get in the van completely voluntary, and we took her to Fairview for detox. After that experience, David, the BCR driver, said, "Wow, she's in a much better place than she was two weeks ago." And I think when we're talking about public safety, we really have to be focused on helping people. And there are so many great police officers in our city that are really doing their best, but they're running up against challenges to truly help people, and that's where our public safety system needs to grow and needs to expand. We can keep putting funding towards MPD, and we can keep funding these alternatives, but we have to be thinking about what is the best person to be responding to each 911 call. I think the chief has done an excellent job at recruitment. Again, he's hired over 100 officers just this year. I think that's his strength, and there's room for improvement in investigations, which is something that, when his contract comes up for renewal, I will be investigating. No pun intended.
Okay. Thank you. The next question asks, "Do you support the approach the mayor has taken to clearing encampments, particularly the Savory Encampment on Lake Street? Why or why not?"
This is one of those issues that we're putting police on a problem that's not necessarily solvable by police. In fact, most of our encampments bring out dozens of police officers at once, and oftentimes, those who are in the encampments do not agree to the resources that are being offered, and there's a reason for that, because they're being offered by someone who's not trustworthy to them. And so in order for us to be more effective in our homeless response, we really need to have the right responders there to bring these people into shelters, into supportive housing. And that's why I think it's so important that we continue to fund culturally-specific supportive housing and shelter options, like the Women's Indian Resource Center that the council supported with $150,000 last year. It was able to, just within a couple of weeks, help 18 Native women go from an experience of homelessness into a more structured life. The Savory Encampment is a battle between two individuals who are quite stubborn. I would say this property owner is not treating our city staff and our city with respect at this point, but I also don't think that litigation is going to get us out of this whack-a-mole encampment problem that we're facing. So we need to get really serious about who are the best community partners to help us get unhoused individuals into housing, and that's where our culturally-relevant nonprofit providers can be the best support for us.
Thank you for that question. I would have supported the mayor's direction. If I would have been on the council, I would have voted in support of serving that lawsuit to that encampment, for we all know what happened a few days later with a mass shooting at that location. Encampments are never safe for those who live in them and for the businesses and the residents who live nearby, and we have to live and work with compassion on all fronts and take all of those impacts into our work. I believe that we also need to be thinking about longer-term solutions for the people that find themselves in these situations. Last few days ago, I wrote a newsletter all about opioid use and really the ability that we could have to really utilize our low-barrier, no-barrier hospital rooms for getting people treatment, and I hope that we can really think about underlying causes. But I firmly do not believe we can manage city-managed, safe outdoor spaces. I've heard this previous council talk about that kind of an idea. That's not something that I would support. We need to really think about underlying causes and moving away from encampments that are affecting everyone around them. I'm really proud of the record that our park board has had around clearing encampments in the parks. Since 2021, we have had a systematic approach where, once we hear of a tent or two in the parks, we have a non-uniformed employee, street reach, reach out with services. They have a charged cellphone. They have other things that people might need, and they try to connect people in the parks to services. If that doesn't work, they serve a reminder saying, "We have an ordinance here. You cannot sleep overnight in our parks. You cannot live in our parks, and we will be back within a certain timeframe to clear the encampment." So I would hope the city could learn from the park board in how to effectively and compassionate deal with encampments.
Next question is about property taxes and income tax. Property taxes are rising sharply, and some are calling for a citywide income tax on high earners. What, if anything, should the council be doing to address the tax burden on local residents?
That's a great question. You know, 10 years ago, we collected about $300 million in property taxes. Now, there's a 67% increase. We're at about $500 million. And I've heard from Ward Seven, the average increase in Ward Seven was 13% increase in your property tax bill, and I've heard on the doors, it's even up to almost 19% one person experience. So it is not sustainable, the route that we are on with property tax increases. It's not. We need to be looking for ways to reprioritize our budget funding, and anytime there's a shortfall, it's either revenue or reprioritizing, right? I think we have to look at both to be able to mitigate this property tax impact that we're feeling from the commercial downturn. So I would hope that in the years to come, that I would be able to really be thoughtful and compassionate, prioritizing core city services first and foremost, and then figuring out where can we trim our budget? Where can we help make a difference for property owners? Because it doesn't affect just residential property. It affects renters. Multi-unit buildings also experience property tax increases, and they need to pass that on directly to renters. So this is an issue for all of us, and I appreciate the mayor's efforts in trimming, you know, $23 million from the recent initiative in the budget, but I think we could probably even go a little further. But I look forward to digging into the details. That has been one of my joys, actually, on the park board, is digging into the details of the budget and figuring out how can we be working more effectively and in more streamlined and getting more for the dollar that we have, because I realize, you know, these are public dollars. We're all feeling that.
Well, I don't think that it's a good time to be starting over with a new council member, because these are very tight budget times, and I have been through this budget before, and I'll be able to do it again. Last year, we had the mayor propose an 8.1% levy increase. Park Board needed more money, and we brought that up to 8.3, but through the council's budget markup process, we were able to bring the increase down to 6.8. Yay! I know that's not something to truly celebrate, but we were able to trim millions of dollars from the mayor's proposed budget last year to bring the property tax levy increase down to 6.8. This year, again, we're facing what I would say is bloated bureaucratic spending, and the council will be marking up the budget here in the coming weeks. So some of my strategies include bringing more of our services in-house instead of contracting out. And you may have seen, I brought this up with regards to a contract to ABM that we just approved for $100 million to a tech company out of Houston to manage our parking systems. And before COVID, we used to put so much of our parking revenue, almost 20% of our parking revenue, into the general fund to lower property taxes, but we're not doing that anymore because we're not being smart enough with our dollars. And so there is a real level of skill involved in finding the ways to trim our budget, to limit bureaucratic spending, and to bring more value into the investments that you're making as taxpayers into your neighborhoods, things that you can touch and feel, like helping our schools, helping our parks, helping our streets be paved, keeping the streetlights on, keeping our hospitals here, making sure everyone is vaccinated, making sure our small businesses have gap financing and loans. There's so much value in what your taxpayers contribute to, but we should not be wasting money on outsourcing contracts to really a lot of unvetted and a little bit grabby organizations that we have right now coming to the city for funds.
Okay. The next question pertains to transit. Construction on Hennepin Avenue is nearing completion. Was the construction process handled appropriately by the city, and what do you think of the end product?
Well, you know, I will take full responsibility for this one because I do chair the Infrastructure Committee, so we've done a lot of work to make sure that Hennepin Avenue's construction went as smoothly as possible. We were able to save dozens of trees by winding the bike path, which was a huge priority for this neighborhood. We were able to flex the bus lanes and the parking to make sure that small businesses did still have parking while we were making sure the bus can move through. I know a lot of people are huge fans of the new medians that allow pedestrians to cross Hennepin Avenue more safely. There is incredible new stormwater infrastructure that's gone in, that's greatly contributing to keeping Lake of the Isles clean. The bike path and the walking path, I'm hearing, could use a little bit more division and separation to make sure that it's operational and people aren't running into each other. I'm very proud that we got through these couple of years. It was not easy, but this is a generational investment in uptown that we're going to be benefiting from, literally for generations to come. These are 100-year investments. We got federal funding for this under the Biden administration. That kind of money is not going to be coming in the next four years, so I'm very grateful that we were able to invest and to get this done. I'm happy with the product. I'm happy that we'll be opening Hennepin earlier than expected and that we'll be able to celebrate together with the incredible Holidays on Hennepin Festival that's going to be, you know, coming to Hennepin in December, thanks to a lot of neighborhood organizations bringing forward really great ideas to support and celebrate the uptown neighborhood in this incredible milestone that we're about to accomplish together.
Yes. I do think there were things that could have been improved in the Hennepin Avenue redesign. I've heard many complaints still from business owners about the communication, the lack of communication as the construction was actually unfolding. And actually, where my campaign office sits, we couldn't get in a couple of days ago because it was blocked off and the sidewalk was gone, and there were barricades at both of our doors. So it's been good for us to experience firsthand the dust through the windows, literally tasting it on our mouth and realizing this is what businesses have gone through over the last months. And so looking forward, if we have additional infrastructures, projects like that, I would like to see two improvements. Number one, I have been committed to dialogue around the Southwest Light Rail as it has unfolded throughout my whole park term. I have learned what good communication looks like, and so I am committed as a representative, if we have another long First Avenue downtown or somewhere, I am committed to communication first and foremost with the people that are directly affected. And I would want to know the contractors. I would want to know who could, who I can get that information directly to pass it on to those affected. And then number two, there's always going to be a push and pull about design ideas in any project, right? And I would hope as a leader to bring people together. I am a biker, I am a car driver. I do not think these things have to be so fraught and so divisive. My spirit is to try to listen to all stakeholders and bring people together for a collaborative win-win situation for all. As far as the trees on Hennepin, that was the direct result of the community that is sitting here in these pews, as well as Park Board Preservation Coordinator and myself. We raised the initiative, the issue, that a lot of times, infrastructure projects don't take trees into account. I gotta stop. But anyway, yeah, more to that if you want to hear more.
Next question is about housing supply and affordability. What do you see as the best approach to increasing housing supply and affordability in Minneapolis?
I'm starting, right? I would say, first of all, if I'm on the, if we have a little bit of a shift on the city council, I think one of the first things we could do is send, make a statement about that we are not going to support rent control for the duration of our term. I think sometimes when we have people that are looking to do investment in housing in Minneapolis, they lump Minneapolis in with St. Paul. And unfortunately, that, when we have that kind of potential change available to a council at any time to put on a developer, I think it makes them very reticent to think about investing. They've got choices in other cities our size to invest in Minneapolis. So number one, I would make a strong statement around rent control from the beginning of my term, if I had support. And number two, we need to continue to support the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The mayor has had great success in incentivizing additional building, including portions of those developments that will be affordable for people of various income levels. We need to continue to support that great work. I would also have a little bit of a shift and also trying to, but most of that work has been in rental market, in rental units. I would like to see this expanded a little bit so that we begin to incentivize affordable housing for first-time home buyers. Oftentimes, we have families that find themselves needing to move out of the city as their family expands. We have seen some increase in rental three-bedrooms, et cetera, but I would like us to think about building on what are the opportunities that we have to incentivize first-time home buyers? We have some for the BIPOC community, and I would like to continue to think about how we could do that. And I think that's, I'm excited that we, this is encouraging density and providing housing is one of the ways that we're going to help our revenue shortfall. So I'm very supportive of the directions the mayor has taken.
So on housing, I definitely think that, you know, we as a city have decided not to support rent control, but I don't think opposing a policy is good enough for housing affordability. There's a lot of work that we need to do to help people live in this city. Especially under the Trump administration, more and more people are being squeezed, and they can't afford to live here. I hear it every single day in Loring Park, where I live, and downtown, there are so many residents who struggle to be here. And so I think it's really important to empower renters, and one thing that I've championed is renters' rights. We have passed mandatory disclosures, we have supported tenants' unions forming, we have supported a new ordinance last week that cracked down on those who get rental licenses but then don't keep their buildings up to code. And helping renters really empower themselves to take ownership over where they live and to stabilize in their neighborhoods is incredibly good for all of us as a city. I also have very strong relationships with the state legislature. I'm proud to be endorsed by all of our state legislators here who represent us in Ward 7. And I frequently go to the Capitol to advocate on behalf of the CUB tax credit that will help us develop more in the city of Minneapolis. I've advocated for TIF financing bills, tax increment financing bills, that help us to group properties together to finance them. And I also have advocated for inclusionary zoning, which helps us bring more money into our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The biggest opportunity that we'll have in the next four-year term is starting to design our 2050 plan. Yes, we're already there. We passed the 2040 plan in 2018, and we'll be passing the 2050 plan here in a couple of years. And so I have a lot of priorities around building more housing near our schools in particular, building housing that is three-to-four-bedroom units near our schools so that more families with young children can live and send their school, kids to school here in Minneapolis.
Okay. Next question is, what do you think are the best strategies for revitalizing downtown and Uptown?
Thank you. So, you know, downtown, representing downtown has been a true honor, and my biggest policy for the downtown of our future, our post-COVID downtown, has been building a 24/7 downtown. So what that means is that it's not just nine to five when office workers are coming in, it's also where people live. And so we now have 68,000 residents in our downtown core, and that number is growing every single day. One thing that I've done to support growing a downtown residential population is amending our zoning code to allow for offices to convert into housing. And developers are taking up this opportunity, and they're developing the lumber exchange into housing, the flour exchange into housing, the grain exchange, these beautiful old warehouse buildings that had, were at the end of their lifespan, are now getting new life as housing. The other piece of a 24/7 downtown is the entertainment district. We have invested, with my leadership, in the Kohl Center for Dance, which is the first time that the city has used our downtown assets fund to fund an arts institution coming back to life. And helping the theater district is an incredible, incredible asset, as well as our sports facilities that bring people into experiencing downtown. Uptown was my biggest priority in the budget season last year, and I'm very happy that I was able to fund not only the farmer's market and Holidays on Hennepin, which are very attractive programs that bring a lot of foot traffic and energy into uptown, but also expand the Vibrant Storefronts Initiative into uptown. So three artists and entrepreneurs just got keys to properties at Lake and Hennepin, where they'll be building their businesses. And thanks to this investment in the arts, we have a new jazz club opening on 28th and Hennepin. We have a puppet theater opening on 24th and Hennepin. Investing in the arts is an economic revitalization strategy, and it's a long-term one, because these artists live here. They're not going anywhere, they're not Starbucks, they're not going to flee the second they can't, you know, make enough money. They are truly here for the long haul, and that's an economic development strategy that I'm proud of.
When I think about uptown and downtown revitalization, I agree with many of the things Katie says about hosting more events and encouraging more tax, you know, zoning development, et cetera. I think where this council has missed it is really cultivating their relationships with small business leaders in order to drive more development and more business investment in uptown and downtown. We can increase the density, we can do, have more events, but we have to have places where residents feel like they can go and shop. We have to have places where people feel like they are safe for them to go and shop. And right now, we're missing that in uptown. I'm all for vibrant storefronts, but we also need businesses. We also need real tax generation happening for the sake of our revenue of our city. And so, for instance, today, I was thrilled to see that SPS Commerce renewed their lease for 15 years, 200,000 square feet in their downtown office building. That is something we need to celebrate. Those are the things we need to celebrate, that this corporation that's as homegrown is able to be able to make that commitment to our city and is willing to renovate the office buildings and encourage their folks that are there. So I'm supportive both of the budding entrepreneur, of which my family has a long history of, and the C-suite. We need to embrace everyone to bring economic vitality back to our city. And I'm gonna, that will be one of the things that I am very near and dear to my heart. And so I will work closely with the Uptown Business Association around their ideas around a business improvement district. I will listen closely to the business people that are there, thinking of incentives for maybe even local residents. I've heard about the old Birch Steak, you know, that there's some rumblings of a restaurant going in there with community support. There should be incentives for communities and investors to invest in vacant storefronts. So that's some of my ideas.
Okay. I think this next question will be our last one, and then we'll transition over to the questions from the audience. This is about constituent services. How do you engage with your constituents, and how important is constituent services, how important are constituent services in relation to your other job duties?
That's been the foundation of what I, how I have operated as a park commissioner, and everybody who has sent me an email knows that you will get a response. I do not have two policy aides, I work part-time and was paid $17,000 a year, but it has been my passion, because I love our parks, I love public service, and that has been the foundation of how I have operated. I have been regular newsletters. I actually have a database, kind of a CRM, of people around the parks. So I have a group of people around Elliott Park, I have a group of people around Stevens Square, that when I know topics of interest are coming on the agenda for that particular geographic area or parks, I can shoot them an email and say, "I know you don't have time to watch these park agendas, but guess what's coming up for a vote?" I hope to operate in that same way if I transition to the city council. I hope to have regular stakeholder groups that would be representative of the various stakeholders in our community, as well as regular constituent services like I just described. What I would like to have is a group of faith community leaders, a group of small business leaders, a group of corporate leaders, a group of transit leaders, a group of whatever the different groups are. I really want to hear all voices, and I think that's how we're going to bring our, the divisiveness that we see in our politics together, today in our city, together, is by making sure each one of those stakeholder groups has an open door to your office, that you will listen to their viewpoint and not hold them at arm's length, even if it's completely different than yours. Because that's how we're going to bring this city together and make a lot of great progress. And that's what we've been able to do on the park board the last four years. We've been over, overcome our differences and be able to work together in embracing all the constituents that are represented by our various districts.
I have to say, there's one stakeholder that has not had their door open to you, and it's been the workers for the park board, and they got pushed to the brink where they actually had to go on strike last summer for the first time in park history, over 100-year history of the park board. I remember calling you, asking for you to just talk through this, and you denied that opportunity. And I think that it's really important that as leaders of a city enterprise, that we do keep our doors open to the thousands of employees that we have at the city, as well as residents. So workers are really important to me. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Labor Federation and dozens of other unions in our city, whose workers truly make our city function. But constituent services is, by and large, my favorite part of this job, helping people access City Hall. I'm very proud that I've grown my newsletter list from 4,000 to 5,000 in the last year. Our newsletters are incredibly detailed, and we try to give you accurate information. We'll never lie to you through social media. We're always fact-checking everything that we send out, because right now, trust in government is very thin. And so it's important that you're hearing from your representatives with truth and facts. I've also been honored that the city clerk named Ward 7 number one for constituent services. We resolved the most amount of constituent services in 2024 at 2,000, and we've resolved over 1,500 this year in 2025. We get back to everyone within three business days, whether that's by phone or by email. And I also started a community roundtable where we go to all nine neighborhoods of Ward 7 every single month for coffee with Katie, which in the summer, we turned into cleanup with Katie, because there was too much trash out in our streets. But it's really been a way to connect with people who don't necessarily know about City Hall by phone or by email. You know, there are 35,000 residents of Ward 7, and it's important to touch each of them. We have advisory bodies at the city, housing advisory body, transit advisory body, and I'm very proud that this year, we have full enrollment for all the Ward 7 seats after a lot of hard work. So thank you all for those who serve on those advisory bodies.
Okay. I've been asked to mention that time limitations mean that not all issues are going to be covered, and we did, the questions were selected based on trying to cover as many issues as possible, but we'll get to, we'll get to two or three of them before closing statements. So the first one is, what actions, if any, will you support at the city level to protect the city and its vulnerable residents from adverse federal actions?
Wow, yeah. These times are incredibly scary, actually, when it comes to constituent services. I had no idea as a council member that I would be tasked with doing immigration work, but here we are in 2025. Immigrants' rights are changing every single day, and we are the closest level of government. We are the city council, we are the last line of defense. And so this year in particular, I've been receiving calls from families. Someone called me who said, "My dad got picked up by ICE on his way to work, I have no idea where he is." And it wasn't easy to track down this person, because like I said, I'm not familiar with immigration policy. That's not something that was in the realm of city councils, core city services, but in 2025, it is. And in the next three years, these issues are going to become more and more important to more and more people who are being persecuted by the Trump administration. Marginalized communities, immigrants, women, youth, elders. SNAP benefits turned off yesterday, so now we're trying to fund food shelves for the first time. There are so many communities that are under attack right now, and I've stood with them. I've stood with workers, I've stood with renters, I've stood with immigrants, I have stood with our LGBTQ members of our community, and everyone in the ward who has a marginalized identity knows I'm the candidate who has the track record of doing that. That's what you want from your city council representative right now. You want a progressive foil to the national political landscape. You want Minneapolis to be a beacon of hope, a place of refuge, where all people are truly welcome and cherished.
Thank you for that question. I'd like to first address this topic that seems to keep bubbling up. The park board last year, we were, we had our first park board strike, and it was unfortunate. Management worked through it, and by the end of the year, we were able to allocate and unanimously vote on a historic increase in the history of the park board for our workers. Over the course of two years, it was an $11,000 increase, up to $6 an hour raise over two years. This has been the majority of our levy increase last year for the parks. Why it was so high was for our workers. This year, the majority of our levy increase is for our workers, and added on, thankfully, to the BET, Upper Harbor, and Greco, being able to open those two parks. So I stand with our workers. My son is a union member, he works in the fire department. I believe that we need to continue, so hopefully I've addressed that question. When we face any kind of When we face any kind of federal threats that come our way, please know that I will stand against Trump. I will stand up for the vulnerable in our community because we need to. If it's a Martin Luther Jr. kind of nonviolent protest that begins, I will be on the front lines. But we will not have chaos ensue. But we will stand up in ways that will make a difference. We will lean into Keith Ellison and the governor and how they will pursue legal means against the federal government. But I will stand up for the vulnerable in our community in every, every way.
Okay. This is a pretty straightforward one. Would you vote to raise the city minimum wage in the future?
This is something I'd have to study more. I don't know the answer to that right off the top of my head because I hadn't thought of that. I do know there are competing pressures that I hear from various people in our city. And so I would like to study that more, and that would be something that I would take all of the stakeholders' input into when we, if and when we had that opportunity to do it.
I've studied this issue a lot. The fact is that when we raise minimum wages, the best way to do it is statewide. Because if we raise the minimum wage just at the local level, it's going to push business just right outside the borders to the first-string suburbs. But luckily, we have a very strong relationship with the state legislature. We are able to go to them to make this a priority. I agree that wages have not kept up with the rise in costs in this city and that it would be very smart for us to raise the minimum wage. But again, I will support that happening at the statewide level and not Minneapolis first.
Okay. With the loss of state and federal funding for the city, how would you address this loss of revenue in upcoming budgets?
We have lost some funding. Actually, our vaccination clinics were the first to get cut. Our health department was the first to get cut. Now we're learning that the millions that we depend on from FEMA for emergency funding has been dwindled down to a $10,000 contribution from Trump, which is directly related to our stance as a progressive city. They are targeting us based on that. So first of all, we're lucky to have a city attorney who's standing up. She's joined forces with San Francisco, with Keith Ellison, with lots of other cities nationwide to stand up against Trump's persecution of blue cities in budgets. And through that legal action, we're actually winning, and we've been able to keep a lot of our funding because we know that how he's targeting us is not constitutional. But the most important thing is that we are able to get funding from our state partners in these very difficult times, which is why I'm so grateful to serve on a lot of committees where I'm able to advocate for Minneapolis priorities. Last year, earlier this year, I actually had the chance to go to DC and advocate for the city with our senators Klobuchar and Smith. And as the infrastructure chair, I really took it upon myself to advocate for some of our $20 million to $30 million infrastructure projects that we have coming up, like the Nicollet Avenue Bridge in South Minneapolis, as well as the First Avenue North reconstruction that's coming downtown. And thanks to Senator Klobuchar, she was able to call the Transportation Secretary, and we've been able to keep all of the capital funding. And so all hope is not lost. We do have to fight for the revenue that we deserve from the federal level. We have to fight for it from our leaders, for our leaders at the state level. But we cannot give in to despair right now, throw in the towel and say, let's just cut all the services and see what happens. That's not a responsible path forward because when you start cutting healthcare and housing, a lot of other quality of life starts to go down. So I'm very happy to be endorsed by Keith Ellison, to be endorsed by all of our legislative leaders, to have those strong relationships, to keep the funding flowing.
Yes, in the face of federal cuts, we are going to have to be nimble. I just heard this last couple of weeks that the Blue Line community engagement meetings have all been paused. This was a sad discussion, or sad point for me to hear because we, as a Park Board, had worked hard with Metro Transit to come to a compromise design that would meet 4F parkland dedication, parkland protection around that design and keep the grand rounds from being interrupted. So with this pause, this means we're not going to stop knocking the door of our legislators, asking them to really advocate on our behalf for some of these key projects that may be on pause for this point in time. I think it also means we're going to have to lean into our relationships at the state and say, you know, now is the time we need more LGA. Now is the time we can really use some additional state funding to make up some of this differential of federal loss that we're experiencing. And lastly, I would also say that it may be we, as a city, have to take a hard look at prioritizing what we have in the pipeline. And if we're missing, if taking funding away from the Blue Line means we have to pause it, we have to pause it, but we need to continue working for that. I would say that we need to continue to think about how can we figure out how to streamline our own budget and mitigate those impacts to the best of our ability.
Okay, one last question, and then we'll move on to closing statements. After Minneapolis, what is your second favorite city and why? What aspects of that city would you like to bring here?
Oh, yep. You got me dreaming. No, I guess I would have to say my hometown of Buffalo, Minnesota. What I like about Buffalo is that everybody knows everybody. The small businesses know when other small businesses are hurting. We know when our neighbors are hurting, and we're not afraid to reach out. Local government is small. You can reach your local mayor or city council person, and they will know who you are. And so my dream for Minneapolis, as we go through these difficult times that I think we're coming out of, that we would continue to lean into each other and bring the small town to our big city. Because that's who we are, and that's how we're going to get through this.
Well, Minneapolis is a great city. I have to admit. I love it more and more every single day. I grew up in northeast Minneapolis. I was very proud to work as a server at the Uptown Diner throughout high school. I worked at the Nicollet Mall Farmer's Market back when that was here. I worked as a bartender downtown. I've worked all across this city. But some things that I really love about other cities that I think we should have more here include what I really love about Berlin, Germany, which is where I did my master's degree. It's a place that's truly equitable. In fact, they don't have any hunger in the city of Berlin. They have really a tight window of inequality between the richest and the poorest in Berlin. And they also have free transit, which is something that, as a student when I was there, was a huge benefit to helping me get around. So I think that our transit and our accessibility through our transportation system is one of those ways that we can really bridge the gap between those who do have vehicles and those who need to truly rely on public service in the city. And I'd like to see us move towards more accessible public transportation options. I know Metro Transit is working on tap-to-pay and also building out fare-free pilots throughout the city. But transportation is one of those features of European cities that I think we still have a long way to go in terms of making our city more sustainable and equitable in the transportation realm.
Okay, we're down to the closing statements. Now, Councilmember Cashman, you started with the opening statement. Did the two of you have thoughts? Do you want to flip the order for the closing?
Oh, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. Sure, go for it. Sure. Well, in a mere 19 days, we all are going to have a decision to make, and we are going to have a shift or a change. We're going to potentially have a change in the direction that our city is headed. And I'm really excited. But regardless of the outcome at the polls, I want to take this moment to say that it has been a joy for me to be your park commissioner the last four years, and we have accomplished a lot together. And I also will say that I am extremely grateful that this community gave me the DFL endorsement for the Ward Seven City Council seat. And my memory of the auditorium that day, when the cheering broke out, will be forever etched in my mind. So thank you. And in closing, I just want to say that I am full of joy and optimism about our great city. I really am. And I think it's time that we start to reset the narrative, change the way we do politics in this city, and thank you for your vote.
Thank you all so much for coming out tonight and hearing about our vision on various issues. It was vision that drove me to run for city council in the first place back in 2023 when we had a change of a 26-year incumbent and a gap of leadership. That was the moment that I stepped up to lead for our city. I'm a public servant at heart. I am someone who steps up to meet the moment when it's needed. I've run a nonprofit. I've run a small business. I am so proud of the team of organizers that I have on my city council campaign. But for the last year and a half, I've really served this ward with integrity. I always speak the truth to constituents. I speak my values and I live my values as a city council member. I'm very proud to be governing independent of special interests. You will not be seeing me campaigning with corporate PACs as opposed to Commissioner Schaefer because right now, we have billionaire oligarchs buying our federal government, and we cannot afford to go in that direction at the local level here in Minneapolis. Please vote for change and progress, and vote for me for reelection.
Now's the moment we've all been waiting for, to clap.
Thank you all for being here. Thank you again, candidates. Thanks, Andrea, so much. Thanks to all of our volunteers. And there was a phone found in restroom. Courtney in pink sweater has it up front. Have a good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here.